Good morning, council and anybody that's paying attention and watching this video today. We appreciate your attendance today. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the role?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Edum?
Thank you.
Eric?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens? Flad?
Here. Thank you. We'll move to gen item number two is update on energy audit request for qualifications RFQ. Public Works Department staff will be present to update the council on energy savings companies ESCO and financing options for energy audits. Council may wish to give guidance to staff regarding the RFQ and possible funding sources. I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Jeff. Are you the one taking it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've got Jeff Mansfield with us. Go ahead, Jeff.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Great. So Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director and City Engineer for the city of Pocatello. I'm joined today by Jen Flan and Maggie Clark from my department as well, and also Matt Stukey from Idaho Power. Dan Olmstead may be joining us further along from Idaho Power. If you recall, we, the city passed, the council passed our Clean Energy Resolution in November of 2019, just a little over a year ago, with a specific set of goals and objectives that they wanted to achieve. I also came back to the council and met with them in October at your council liaison session and kind of gave an update on where we were and kind of what the path forward looked like. I wanted to meet with you again at this time to give you a brief update on things that we've been working on and things that we continue to work on. We've received some requests from council that we that we give another update on this, and so that's what we're going to do today. First thing I want to talk about a little bit is what an ESCO is, or an energy services company. An ESCO, that's a term that I'll be using pretty regularly throughout my presentation today, and so I want you guys to have an understanding of what that is. ESCOs are companies that develop, build, design, and arrange financing for projects that save energy, reduce energy costs, and decrease operations and maintenance costs at their customers' facilities. So we'll talk a little bit more about some of the different energy performance contracts that they do. But really with ESCOs, there are two options that the city can pursue. This is, this is in line with the discussion that we had in October when I indicated that I would bring back, after the first of the year, we'd start working on an RFQ for an energy audit. So option one is simply to do, have the ESCO do an energy audit, just that, just that part of it. Some things about doing an audit like that is that the ESCO will not help find funding for the audit, nor will they guarantee project savings. They'll just give estimates of what the savings will be, and it's required that the city will be, will have to pay for the audit costs upfront. Next slide. Option number two is to do an energy performance contract. With this type of a scenario, the ESCO does an audit, they help with financial assistance, they help locate funding, they help with the installation and design, measurement, and verification of the project. The way that these are funded is through long-term lease purchase agreements that are backed by the performance contract. And then the ESCO will pay the city the difference between the actual savings and the promised savings. They do not, the city's not required to pay for the audits upfront, and the costs are rolled into the construction of the project. However, if the city chooses not to initiate any of the projects identified, then the city will have to pay for the cost of the audit. I should have said, as we're going through there, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me. So one thing that we found as we were researching these ESCOs and these opportunities a little bit is that there used to be funding for the state of Idaho to do these energy performance contracts. However, that money has gone away, but the mechanism still exists in Idaho State Legislature, legislation that allows us to enter into contracts with these ESCOs, performance-based contracts with these ESCOs. So, so the legislation is still there. So just to give you guys a little bit of background, we discussed this previously, but we've done some more research into this. The city of Pocatello did a Chevron study with an ESCO in 2010. The duration of that study was about nine months, and it cost the city about $52,500. From those, the results of that, that performance contract is that they analyzed 19 facilities using 12 months' worth of data. From the study, it was estimated that we would save $74,000 on utility costs in the first year. 66% of those potential savings were from facility-wide lighting upgrades. The city of Pocatello received a grant from the Department of Energy for about $530,000, and that, we utilized that money to implement these projects through 2009 to 2012. These included such things as street lighting enhancements, municipal conservation efforts, and the library roof. Next slide. In addition to the Chevron study, there have been other things that the city's been doing that have helped us work towards meeting this Clean Energy Resolution. There have been a lot of departmental efforts that have been happening within, throughout citywide. We had a phone call with Idaho Power this last week and started talking to them about what some of their funding opportunities were and, and what some of the programs that they have available, and they told us that they pulled our records on the incentives that we've been involved in and the incentives that we received, and they said they were super impressed with the amount of projects that we've done. In fact, they sent us a copy of that, which I forwarded to the council on Tuesday, so you should have a copy of that. In addition to that, Public Works Annex has done some research into switching their facility over to solar power. We've installed conduit for electrical charging stations on some of the projects that we're doing so that if we get to that point where we have electrical vehicles, a lot of that infrastructure will already be in place. And the water and WPC departments have participated in the Idaho Power Company cohort to maximize efficiencies. And then, as you, as you're all aware, in November 2019, council passed Resolution 201911, which was a Clean Energy Resolution. Next slide. So as a refresher, as I mentioned earlier, I came to council, the council liaison meeting on October 15th, and had some, had some recommendations and some direction that I received from council. At that time, the, my recommendation was that the city move forward with an energy audit. We had committed to the council that we would start working on this audit, or excuse me, we'd start working on the RFP after the first of the year and have that ready to be posted sometime in the spring. At that meeting, council members also requested information from us for the power and gas bills citywide. This information was provided in a spreadsheet to council on December 14th. My staff has been actively involved in talking to other regional cities about how their energy audits are going. That was another thing that came out of the meeting in October. We've reached out to the city of Kuna. Originally, we thought STAR was the one that was doing the audit. We found out it was, it actually was the city of Kuna, and we reached out to them and got some information back from them, and we've also reached out to the city of Ontario, Oregon. Both of those either have done recently audits, or they are in the process of doing so. And I think both of those did energy performance contracts, correct? Yeah. And then also, the council asked for kind of an update on where we are at with alternative energy vehicles, and Fleet will be giving a presentation later during this meeting that will talk about some of the, the things that we're looking at with Fleet. Next slide. So, this, this resolution, it's only, what, four or five pages long, but I bet I've read this thing 50 times, and just trying to make sure that I'm intimately aware of what it, what it says and what council's desires were from, from that resolution. I've got listed here the resolution goals that are identified in the resolution. I'm not going to read through all of those. I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with those, and if not, you can, you can read those on your own time, so. But I do want to talk about each one of those goals individually. So the first goal was to support Idaho Power's clean energy commitment by 2045. Excuse me for just a second here. There we go. So, under this goal, I want, under each one of these goals, I want to talk a little bit about what we have done to, to support these goals, what we are doing to support the goals, and kind of where we plan to go in the future. So, as I mentioned previously, we have met with Idaho Power to discuss this goal. They're super excited to, to work with the city. They're excited that the city is on board with helping them meet this commitment, and they've agreed to work with us, and then, as I mentioned, we've got some representatives from Idaho Power on here today. If council has specific questions to Idaho Power, they're, they're available to ask those questions. We did get a project list from Idaho Power with a background, with some of the background on a lot of the projects that we've done since 2009. We'll continue to do departmental efforts to contribute to Idaho's, Idaho Power's goal to provide clean energy by 2045, and the projects that we have done in the last 10 years have saved over 2.3 million kilowatt hours per year, and departments have received over $165,000 in incentive payments, and so that's, that's a huge thing for us. This doesn't count some of the other things that we've been involved in, such as our methane generators and things like that out of WPC. Next slide. So I'm going to skip to, I'm going to skip the goal number two. I'll save that one for last to talk about goal number three. This is that we want to enact clean and renewable energy policies and maximize energy conservation efforts. WPC and Water participated in Idaho Power's Strategic Energy Management Cohort. These have been great programs for both Water and WPC, and we've realized substantial savings and reduction in power consumption in both departments. Just as an example, the Water Department in the last two years received over $15,000 of incentive money and has reduced energy consumption by 649,000 kilowatt hours per year. In addition, the Water Department constructed a lead in energy and environmental design, LEED certified building in 2012. This is one of the few lead buildings in the city of, in Pocatello. And then, staff has provided council with a comprehensive list of items that have been done citywide. So again, that's that spreadsheet that I sent out on Tuesday with a lot of the things that we're doing, you know, from small to big, but really helping to, to meet these renewable energy policies in practice. Next slide. This is the continuation of goal number three. So as I mentioned previously, we're installing electrical infrastructure for potential charging stations as projects are accomplished. We're supporting alternative forms of transportation and, and looking into that, and Tom and his crew will be talking about some of that during their fleet presentation. Some other things that the city does as we participate in Bike to Work Week, and many departments utilize alternative schedules to reduce energy costs, and we host the Environmental Fair annually. Next slide. The goal number four is to, kind of discussing the relevant city decisions and future plans for the city. And so in order to, in an effort to, in order to enhance energy efficiency, we are conducting funding research. We're looking for opportunities to complete projects and programs that we can be involved in that'll help us get to the goal where we want to be at. We're engaging in what we call maybe either a prelim, a mini audit, mini energy audit, or a preliminary audit. We've actually talked to two of the, two different ESCOs. One of the ESCOs volunteered to provide kind of a rough preliminary engineering or energy audit of our city facilities to determine whether or not it's worth moving forward with a full audit and an energy performance contract. And so we're in the process of getting all of our data regarding building sizes, building year, the years they were constructed, and what their utility costs are. We're going to get that sent over to, to one of these ESCOs and have them just kind of do a rough estimate on, on what they, what they see and whether or not it's even worthwhile for the city to move forward if, if the savings are really there. And then, we'll move into the RFQ process. So we'll need to make a decision whether we want to, whether we want to pursue an energy services contract or an energy services performance contract. Again.
Jeff, excuse me, just a minute. It looks like Roger has a question.
Jeff, in all of this, I've looked at, of course, I, I might miss something in detail. It seems to me that we're missing the proposal that the city engaged in, in the, about 2008, 2007 for wind turbine installation. It was widely reported in the paper. We had a follow-up study done on it, I believe. And I think we had a proposal of a return of about seven, seven years it would be paid for, and it would take care of all of our electrical requirements. Have you seen that?
Is that the one up on the, on the west bench?
Yes, sir.
Up kind of where the Holy Spirit Catholic Church was at?
No, way up above. Yeah.
Okay.
Up there on the, on the summit.
You know, Councilman Bray, I appreciate that comment. It's a good question. I, I personally have heard of that, but I, but I don't know any details on it. But I just made a note here. I'll look into that and see, see where that went or where, what the status of that is.
Yeah, I remember it, it came in and we were, we were told about seven years it would be producing all we would need, so seven years to pay it off, and then we would be, you know, doing real well in terms of our energy.
Do you recall who presented that to council?
Fred Davies had a lot of input into it.
Okay. Thank you for that input. So, moving on, we've found some information about what, what an energy audit costs. It'll be about $40,000 to $60,000, depending on whether the city wants to pay for that upfront or whether you want to roll that, that into the project. It will take about six to nine months to complete it, and will require a substantial amount of data collection by staff in order to support that. One thing that is still kind of up in the air is whether or not we would include WPC and Water in this energy audit because they just recently completed their, their energy cohorts, and we don't want to, we don't want to have redundant efforts on that. But if there's opportunities there that are available, we will definitely include those departments. And then.
It looks like Chris has a question. Chris, you're muted. If you're speaking, we can barely see the.
Yeah. Okay. This is really for Idaho Power. So Idaho, as I understand it, Idaho Power has committed to this, to providing clean electricity by 2045, and that really doesn't have, it doesn't require anything from the city. I mean, that, that, that's an Idaho Power goal that is proceeding regardless of what Pocatello or any other city in their service area does. Is, is my understanding correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, and if you read the, if you read the resolution, it just basically says that we will support them in their commitment to that, so.
And, and so what does that mean? Can you help me understand what, what supporting Idaho Power means and other than in terms of, of a statement? Like what actions does that? I, what does that mean to you? Because I, I don't, I'm not clear.
To me, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, or from the city perspective. I mean, the fact that we're going to support Idaho Power, can you, what, what does that mean other than the fact that we're saying, you know, "Good job, Idaho Power"? I mean, is that essentially what that means when we say we support them?
So, so from my perspective, I think it means that we're willing to work with them as they have programs and projects available, that we're willing to participate in those. We're willing to meet with them. They've, they've offered to serve on our task force, that we, we're willing to have conversations with them and, and help, help incorporate some of their commitments and some of their programs into our own programs.
So for Idaho Power folks, how, how does support from the city, or what support from the city would actually contribute to your, to helping you reach your goal in a material measurable way?
So, good morning. This is, this is Dan Olmstead with Idaho Power. Thanks for that question. We, in our 2045 Clean Energy Goal, we really need partners to help us with that. And we think we're 70 or so percent there already with our hydro-based system, but we look to cities to take advantage of any and every program that we have available, which you've already done in a large respect, that help us reach that goal. Part of our goal is heavily dependent on energy efficiency, and that's what mostly you've been doing in Pocatello. So that's our plan for all of the cities that we serve, is to ask them to be our partners, and especially where we can be involved in energy efficiency task forces or whatever, to help us reach that goal. It's necessary for cities, especially like Pocatello and our larger users, to be fully involved with us to help meet that, that goal, and it can take all kinds of shapes, but hopefully that helped answer your question.
Well, I guess I'm, so basically by, by reducing the amount of electricity that the city of Pocatello uses, that means that helps you by reducing the amount of clean electricity that you need to, to produce in order to reach your goal?
That's partly correct, yes.
And, and how else, how else, I mean, how else? Because conservation reduces use, and so if conservation is supporting you, then it means it's supporting you because it's reducing the amount of clean energy you need, clean electricity you need to produce, which makes it easier to reach your goal. How else does a city, does Pocatello conserving energy help you reach the goal of you producing clean energy?
So the other part of this could be in the area of renewables. I think a wind turbine project was mentioned, and that would be up to the city. But to continue on our glide path out of coal and eventually natural gas, we need to have these energy efficiency programs totally operational to help us, like you said, reduce consumption. And that way, our coal-fired power plants that we are on the path of moving out of now are not producing enough, and economically, it makes sense for us to move out of those and replace those with renewables, like solar projects, some possibly wind projects, other type projects. So it's all working together to, right now, really, energy efficiency is the goal, but also eventually renewables to help us move out of those carbon-producing plants.
So for cities.
Probably not answering your question completely, but.
Okay. No, but it helps. So what I'm hearing, just to paraphrase and make sure that I'm clear, basically you are, Idaho Power is looking for partnerships with municipalities that would be willing to engage in producing some of their own clean energy in order to help reduce the load for Idaho Power. So he would be very open and amenable to partnering with the city to work on developing its own clean energy sources?
That's, that's correct. We're more in an advisor role. That's the way we want to partner with cities. Exact partnership agreements would probably be not necessary at this point, but certainly working with you as, as strong energy advisors, which we think we've done already and will continue to do. That's, that's more the, the position that we would take at this time.
Okay. Is Haley in your service area? Do, I don't know.
It is.
So, so they've committed to clean, 100% clean energy by, I believe it's 2035? 10 years, and clean energy, not just clean electricity. So, so in their commitment to that goal, how would you see Idaho Power partnering with them to help them reach that goal?
You know, I'm not real familiar with the, the cooperative agreement with Haley that they're working on. I think we're working on more a Boise model, where we serve as an advisor. But I'll get back with you on, on a little more information on that, if possible.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, one thing about these energy performance contracts that's kind of unique is, I want to, I want to just kind of give a generalized example. Let's say, for example, we, I'm going to make, keep it real simple, just with City Hall. Let's say that we decide to do an energy performance contract with an ESCO to, to evaluate City Hall. And they come in, they, they do the audit, they, they put together a project, they come up with an estimate on how much that project will cost. Let's say, for example, our utility bills at City Hall are $100,000 a year, but, but through the, through doing this energy efficiency program, project, they estimate that our, our savings, our, our energy bills will go down to $80,000. And so they're estimating that we're going to save $20,000 a year on, on just City Hall. And so let's say that they design a project that includes, you know, lighting, new HVAC, things like that. And so let's say the project costs maybe, say, $500,000 or something. So rather than the city actually having to go out or recome up with the, the $500,000 or go out for a bond election, the way that it works is that the, the ESCO acquires funding through funding agencies, and the, the payment for the project is actually made based on the savings that, that you, you get from the project. So if you're saving $20,000 a year on that project, and, and that, that would be what they call lease payments, you would make those lease payments to the funding agency rather than coming up with the money upfront, and also having to take out a bond. So it does not go against our bond rating. However, it will involve long-term lease payments, and so there is some financial aspects here. And so our new CFO will be starting next week, I believe it is.
Yes.
And because of the, the financial impacts that this could have on the city, we want to, we want to get him involved in this and kind of get him up to speed before we release the RFQ. And so that, that's kind of our next steps forward with regards to that, is, is moving forward with that RFQ, getting him on board, getting the task force, force on board, and then, and then. getting him on board, getting the task force, force on board, and then, and then moving forward with an RFQ. Uh, once we kind of figure out with the options that we want to pursue, we'll, I anticipate we'll bring that back to council right before we submit an RFQ and make sure you're comfortable with the direction that we're going. One other caveat about that is, let's say, let's say that the ESCO estimates that you're going to save twenty thousand dollars a year, um, and that's how you're going to pay for the project. Well, in reality, if you only end up saving fifteen thousand dollars a year, now the ESCO is, they have a performance clause that they have to come up with that additional five thousand dollars every year to make that payment, if you're not getting the performance that was guaranteed in the contract. So that is kind of a, kind of a neat aspect. Um, all right, let's go ahead and move into the next slide there, the task force.
So just a minute.
Okay.
Just a minute, Claudia has, is waving her hand frantically, she has a question.
I'm, I'm wondering, you keep mentioning the task force. Who's on this, who, who, what, who comprises the task force?
Great question, Claudia, that's the next slide, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for that segue. So, um, so this is our task force that we looked at. Um, as we kind of looked at the roadmap and, and what, what, what we, how we kind of would start out with this task force. We anticipated that our initial meeting would, would cover roles and expectations, subcommittees and leads, um, ESCO considerations, you know, talk about the RFQ and help direct which projects are going to be done from the audit recommendations. The members that we've selected to, to serve on the task force are myself, Jen Flynn, Maggie Clark. Uh, the three of us have been pretty actively involved in this, uh, over the last several weeks and, and will continue to do so. We've got Hannah Singer from the Environmental Department, Tom Kirkman, Carrie Farnsworth, Mike Neville from the Street Operations Department. We've got a couple of outside, uh, individuals, which would be Dan Olmstead and Matt Stuckey from Idaho Power and Shannon Ansley, um, she's an environmental scientist, uh, pretty heavily involved with, she, she worked for the Shoshone Banning Tribes and pretty involved in, uh, PRT, PRC.
PRC.
And, uh, yeah, she doesn't drive bus.
No, she doesn't.
Uh, pretty involved with PRC and, uh, she was heavily involved in the, uh, Recycling Committee, the Citizens Advisory Group that, that helped implement the recycling group. And then also James Kruger, which is our, our new CFO, um, having him, uh, involved from the financial aspect. So that's where we're at with that.
So it looks like Chris has a question.
Um, yeah, I wasn't, I was present at the meeting when the resolution was passed that included this task force. But I'm, I'm wondering, my concern about the committee frankly is that it's very, very heavily city represented. And, uh, there are, is what? There are two, uh, community representatives. And so, for example, I know that there are several economists in Pocatello and also several in Rexburg that, who have, uh, renewable energy economics as part of their expertise. We have other local folks who, there's a local attorney who has worked, uh, with Monsanto down in Soda Springs as they convert their plant there to clean energy. I'm, I'm concerned that, that this is not, uh, a community task force or necessarily a task force that includes representation from either, uh, local business or from local specifically clean energy experts in both finance, economics, and, and the, you know, the mechanical, the engineering, the, the side of things. And so I, I'm, I'm concerned that this, for me, even though I wasn't part of the council that voted on the resolution, this does, this does not match my picture of what this task force should be. And I'm wondering if before we move ahead, we need, I would like to have council as a whole revisit our resolution, clarify for, for the current council what exactly it is that we want and maybe put some more specific, um, goals and information into that resolution.
So I'd like to give a couple of comments there, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, so first of all, um, I, I can appreciate your comments there, Chris. Uh, however, if we move forward with an energy performance contract with an ESCO, they already have a team of experts that are involved in solar power, wind power, uh, finance. They help, they help us research grants and, and financial opportunities. Uh, they, they really put together the whole package. And then, and then we basically, as a group, um, help decide which, which projects we want to move forward with. And so it's kind of a, a one, one shot, one stop shop, that they can provide all of that for us. Uh, number two, um, i- it's our understanding that the council's desire at the time was that this be a, uh, a, a city task force and a city effort, rather than a community effort. Um, there's nothing prohibiting, you know, PRC or some of these other community groups from moving forward with their own efforts and their own, um, opportunities in order to work with Idaho Power to help meet those, those goals that they have.
So Linda, Linda has a, a question as well. So let's go to Linda and then Chris, I think you have another question.
And I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but, um, my understanding of the task force when we were, uh, developing the resolution and passed the resolution was really more along the lines of what Jeff was saying, that it was going to be, um, I mean deliberately city employee heavy because they're the ones who need to kind of figure out how we can best move forward and then, um, you know, come to us with, with those, uh, proposals or ideas. So my understanding is that that was kind of always the intention, that, that this wasn't the same as a community advisory committee, um, that, you know, has been put together in, in other cases. This was a little bit different. And so I'm, this fits with what I was expecting and I'm comfortable with this makeup and that it is primarily city employees. That being said, I don't have any issue with going back and, and reviewing the, um, resolution just to make sure everybody really understands what it says and is comfortable with it and everything. But, uh, I also think, you know, we need to not, um, start over and, and just keep moving forward. So, uh, this does fit with what I was expecting.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Chris, did you have another question?
Um, well, yes, first, I, first, it's a very simple one. I would just like to, I don't think that I have a copy of this PowerPoint, but could I get a copy of, of the PowerPoint just so that I, um, you know, don't get confused in the future? And then, um, anyway, that's all I really want to say right at the moment, thank you.
So, real quick.
I'm sorry, what's the cost of the audit only?
So it would be about forty to sixty thousand dollars for the audit.
All right.
So, so we've got a question from Claudia, but before we go to Claudia, I have a quick question. Jeff, did you send a copy of this PowerPoint to everybody?
I, I, I did not, I, I will, I will send it right after the meeting. I, I was tweaking it even up till this morning.
Okay, will, will you also, have you sent a copy of the resolution to everybody? I think everybody's received a copy a number of times, but do we add a copy of the resolution as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Claudia?
So Jeff, did I, uh, hear you correctly that you said that there was an ESCO who volunteered to do, uh, what you called a mini audit? To see if it was even worth doing a, a full audit?
Yes.
Did I hear you right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, so when you say they volunteered, are they willing to do that? What's the cost of that? Or are they literally volunteering and it's going to not cost any money to do that?
No, it, it'll be free of charge. I mean, it's just a, it's a fifty thousand look view at, at all the facilities, just to kind of look at it and say, yeah, we see some opportunities here, here and here. They're not going to get into nuts and bolts. Um, it's just going to be a kind of a cursory glance to, to determine whether or not it's even worth pursuing forward.
And so what would stop us from, from moving forward with that while we're waiting for our CFO to get here and, and everything else? Is there-
We're, we're actually in the process of doing that right now.
Oh, okay.
Jen's been actively getting all of our, uh, financial data, uh, utility bills and things like that, put together our building sizes and ages. Uh, Jen's been pretty busy working on that.
Okay, I must have missed that part, thank you.
That's okay, good question.
Okay, uh, Chris?
Yeah, again, this is probably for Idaho Power. And I don't know if you can answer it or, or this, what Claudia was just, um, talking about is, is the best answer. But given, um, all the, uh, energy conservation, because that's basically what, what the city has done so far, is we've engaged in conservation projects, which are clearly important, um, but that's different than transitioning to clean energy. Anyway, um, given all the efficiency projects that the city has already undertaken, can you give an off-the-cuff answer to whether or not seeking further efficiencies versus focusing time and money on actually transitioning to a hundred percent clean energy? Is, is further conservation really the best bang for the buck at this point, given, given the great work that the city's already done?
Matt, do you want to take that one?
Sorry, can you hear me now? I started talking without unmuting. Yeah, um, great question, Chris. I, I think that there, we have done a lot already with the city. I think there's still a lot more that can be done in terms of energy efficiency as you, you think about all the different buildings and opportunities there are and, and the different programs that we have. Um, and so I, I think as part of that task force, one of the things that we want to do as part of that is to identify exactly that question. And sit down and look at energy usage, um, look at additional opportunities and get our team of experts together to, to see, you know, what could be, um, the realization of, of reducing our energy here, for the city of Pocatello with, uh, additional ener, um, energy efficiency program. So I, I don't think we want to just bypass and jump. I think we want to sit down and evaluate both of those, would be my recommendation. And, uh, and, and just continue to evaluate and, and make that decision as, as a task force.
Thank you.
Roger, Roger, and then Linda.
Okay, um, will this task force look at our fleet? And I know you're, Jeff's going to defer to Tom on that. But it seems to me with all the stuff that's going on with, uh, electric vehicles, that, uh, there should be a component in here to see how we might move to electric vehicles and therefore how, how that might alter our consumption of electricity, but really save our consumption of energy.
Sure, and that's why I, that's why I included Tom and Carrie and, and Mike and Neville in this, is so that they could, they could bring in some of that aspect, as well as traffic lights and things like that. So that definitely would be, would be a topic for us to consider, uh, in the task force.
Uh, Linda?
Uh, yeah, I have a, um, just a kind of small question for Jeff. I mean, it's not real important in the scheme of things, but I'm curious. The, um, uh, audit that we will do, or maybe even the mini audit that you're kind of already doing, um, are they planning to include, um, buildings that we own? For example, the Brady Chapel and the Greyhound Building?
So that, that's a good question. And, and I think what we have decided is that if they are buildings that we are paying the utilities on, then we will include them in the audit. Uh, if they're, if they're not, then, then we probably would exclude them from that audit.
Okay, Chris?
Um, yeah, a few, a few years ago now, um, I had some conversations with, um, with a gentleman who, at Idaho Power, whose name I can't recall. Um, and anyway, he was, at that point, he was talking about, um, the fact that he was wishing that Pocatello were poised to take advantage of, um, a, um, a grant that was available to put in electric vehicle charging stations. And he talked about the fact that Idaho Power actually offers some, um, some energy audit services. So can, can somebody talk to me about, um, going forward? And this is probably Idaho Power, going forward, what kinds of, of grant opportunities or other financial opportunities does Idaho Power envision in terms of partnering with cities to help reduce their, their, uh, purchased electricity needs? And, um, also does Idaho Power offer any kind of, um, audit services?
I can jump in here, Dan. We had this conversation with, uh, Jeff and his team, um, just about a week ago. And, and we went and spoke with our audit team. And we do have some, some, uh, the ability to do some audits, uh, scoping assessment and what we call scoping assessment and detail assessment. Now, in terms of the scope of, you know, how grandio, grandioso this is, I mean, this isn't a whole city audit. What it is, is a more focused audit, that we would love to team up. And, and that's what, you know, where we can go and, and pick a specific building and, and, um, go in and, and if that building qualifies, um, you know, pick a specific project and analyze how best to make that building more energy efficient. On, on some of them, there, there is some funding available, uh, under the detail assessments. They will cover up to seventy-five percent, up, up to a max of, uh, twelve thousand five hundred. But again, there is some limitation in scope in terms of what we would do with these audits as a pair, compared to these ESCOs. Dan, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, on the fleet question though, Chris, yes, you were probably talking to Mark Lupo maybe a few years ago. And we still have, um, and have had monies available for cities to install charging stations. That's that grant you were talking about. We have a different person working that program now and we can get you some more information on, on that and how that works.
So, so council, uh, and so Chris, if you've got some more questions for Idaho Power like that, it might be beneficial to, to see if Matt or Dan would be willing to meet with you on a phone call or, or something to be able to go through some of these, these other questions and answer some of those questions. The, uh, the thing that I think we need to do is give some direction on this energy audit and give some input, are, are we, are we going in the right direction? Which I believe we are. I think that we've got the, the, a committee that's doing what they're doing. We've got the right people in place. That doesn't preclude, preclude us from inviting other people on different, in different aspects when needed. But right now, I think we're poised to move forward and do what we need to. And it looks like Linda, you've got your hand up.
Yes, um, I would like to comment, uh, well, first, I'd like to thank Jeff and, and the other staff that worked on this, Maggie and Jen and, and everyone else. I really am excited about this other option. I mean, we sent you off to do, uh, you know, to find out about doing an audit. But I'm glad that you didn't just stick to that and that you came back- But I'm glad that you didn't just stick to that and that you came back with this other option, because I think this is really exciting. The biggest hurdle always to doing projects and to moving in the direction that you want to move is, is the financial aspect. And this seems to offer a really reasonable way to, to handle the funding and to not have to go to bond or, you know, require more taxes, that kind of thing. So I'm really excited about this. And I, I do understand we have a new CFO and we need to wait till he's here and onboard and, and get his input on this. But I think we have some really good plans here and ideas and ways to move forward. I'm satisfied with the, the task force. And I think they can advise us on, on how to move forward and what kind of projects would be best for us to do. But I want to thank you because I, I think this is an exciting option, particularly the financial part of it, because that's always the, the most difficult part. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, Chris?
Yeah, I would be very grateful and, and very interested in sitting down with Idaho Power folks. Can somebody please, if, if they're willing, can somebody please email me their names and contact information? And then I would, I, I would like to, I would really like to have council revisit the resolution, given the fact that, you know, two of us are new, a third of the council is new. And, and we're sort of the keepers, the current keepers of this resolution. And then I would also like to have regular updates from the task force with the next one occurring prior to April 1. I, I am really interested in, especially since we're in the conservation phase now and we really haven't, aren't in a position yet to begin addressing the transition to clean energy phase. And that's a whole nother set of discussion topics. So Mr. Mayor, could we please have another update sometime around the end of March? And could we please have an agenda item just to revisit and have council discussion to make sure we're all on the same page regarding the current resolution and?
So, so that's why I asked Jeff or Jen to send out a copy of this PowerPoint and the, and the resolution so council can take a look at it. You can get familiar with it and then we'll definitely have a discussion at some point. Concerned about the April 1st timeline is we have got to get the RFQ or get at least an opinion from, let me see if I can remember, what did Jeff call it? What did you call that, Jeff? The ESCO?
Yeah.
From ESCO and see what we've got. And they'll need to be in front of us before we push that out to, to, to get an RFQ on that. And so April 1 might be a little bit aggressive on being able to do that just simply because of timelines. But we'll do that as soon as we can get that taken care of.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm not asking that we have an update specifically on that. I'm just asking that we have a brief update as to where things stand. And if, if, if the RFQ or whatever it's called hasn't gone out, I mean, that, that's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about just having, you know, an update on this, on, on where we stand regarding this issue every couple of months. So, so I don't, I mean, even if it's like, okay, here's what we've done. Here's what, where we are, you know, here's when we're sending this out. I mean, that's an update and that, that would be sufficient for my needs. I just want to have regular updates, please.
Well, what, what we'll do is, is I'll see if we can't have them email that out so that we're, because really our update opportunity would be in, on the second week of March. And that's going to be very aggressive to do it. So maybe toward the end of March where they'll have a little bit more idea, we'll, we'll be able to email that out. So.
That, that would be super. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, council and Maggie and Jen and Jeff and everybody else is willing to serve. Dan and Matt, thank you for your time today. We'll go ahead and get your information to Councilwoman Stevens so that she can reach out if she has further questions, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is policy change to fleet and public transit department mechanic, foreman, tool requirements and allowance. Staff members will be in attendance to discuss changes to the fleet department's mechanic, foreman, tool requirements and allowance policy. The request, the requested change would include the public transit department in, department to the policy. Who are we dealing with? Heather, are you on Heather?
It's rare that I bring the least complicated item on the agenda, so I'm a little bit smug about that.
Wicked complicated. Just give us a minute.
Oh, please don't try.
Duck it out over your screen.
I know. I jinked myself now. So we are looking to expand our tool requirement list and adjust our policy on transit mechanic allowances from the lump sum that we have, have done at the beginning of the fiscal year to a per paycheck allocation like we do with the fleet mechanics. This would impact three employees in the transit department. And the increased cost would be $3,000 for those employees. Skylar is able to absorb that cost within his current operating budget. And I have fleet and Skylar on if you have specific questions for either of those departments.
Chris?
Yeah, because I wasn't part of the conversations that, you know, that had anything to do with, with this tool allocation ever. I'm, I, could somebody give me, or Heather, or somebody give me a thumbnail sketch of, of what, how does this work? Do, do the people who get this lump sum turn in receipts? If they don't expend their allowance, do they just pocket that money? How do we track what, what the taxpayers are getting for the money that is spent? And after you answer those questions, you know, hopefully I won't have any others.
Let me write those down real quick.
Okay. So, so I guess the big question is what is the advantage to the taxpayers to doing it this way? Do we track what, where that money, what that money is spent on? And do we have any record keeping? And what happens to any money that is unexpended by an individual?
So we do have a list of required tools that is attached to this policy. Rick pointed out this morning that the hyperlink wasn't working. I'll make sure we correct that, but I did send out the tool requirement list to council. So $300 towards tools doesn't buy much. I can tell you that it's not covering the cost of their expense. And while the tool, specialized tools, the city does purchase items that a mechanic wouldn't normally have. They are responsible for their own boxes and their content. Their supervisors or their department heads are aware of what tools, you know, if they're missing, that becomes very apparent and that is addressed. Rick?
Rick's got a question. Go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt Heather. Go ahead and finish. No, I'll comment.
Um, we worked out a standardized tool list with the fleet department. Teresa and Tom were kind of the driving force on that. We do not require receipts. This isn't a reimbursement type program. It's an allotment and then they buy what they need. If they need a new wrench because their old wrench doesn't work, we're not going to go in and do an inspection of the equipment they're hoping to replace.
Good, Rick?
I'm really struggling with this. I made phone calls to most of the dealerships in Pocatello and a couple of out of town. There isn't a single dealership, new car dealership in eastern Idaho that I can find that has a tool allowance for mechanics. There's an expectation when you become a mechanic that you provide your own hand tools and the dealership provides specialty tools. And I frankly cannot support this proposal to increase the salary of our employees by $1,000 a piece a year.
Okay. Chris, you have another question?
Well, no, I don't have a question. I, I, I want to say that I, I'm not exactly where Rick is, but I think my concerns are, are kind of coming from the same place. I, I mean, I, you know, if, if I'm a mechanic and I get, because as I understand it, this is actually like $1,300, you know, 26 pay periods. And so if I'm a mechanic and for whatever reason I'm able to, you know, get by on 600, then I've essentially, as Rick says, increased my remuneration by $700 and I'm not really accountable to anybody for that. And there's, I, I just have some discomfort around that. So I'm, I'm, like I say, I'm maybe for different reasons or whatever, but I'm, I'm kind of in the same place Rick is.
Looks like Claudia?
I'm, I'm in that same place. I'm actually where Rick is. My dad was a diesel mechanic for General Motors for years and years and years. And General Motors never once bought him a tool or a toolbox. They supplied all the big hoists and, you know, things and things like that, but they did not, my dad's tools were my dad's tools. And we're, we're, so we're providing uniforms and boots and safety equipment and things like that. But I, and, and, and according to the budget for, we're also providing certifications and things like that. At some point we have to say enough is enough and you're responsible for your own stuff. So I'm where Rick is.
So Tom, do you want to weigh in on this at all? I know that, I'd hate to put you on the spot. And I, I know that we've got to get our employees the equipment that they need and, and stuff. And I, and so, Tom, go ahead and if you have any comments or any input for this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. The tool allowances is definitely a tricky subject. The, the way I, the way I look at things is the tool allowance really, tools are very expensive nowadays. You know, you could buy, but if you want to buy a quality, like a Snap-on set of screwdrivers, of three or four screwdrivers, it's $150 right now. So when I look at the tool allowance, it's more of a replacement. So as their tools wear out, we're helping to offset some of that cost to purchase new tools. I mean, some, a real rude example, or a crude example I could give is like, you know, our construction crews, you know, it would be like bringing your own shovel to work and wearing it out and then bringing a new shovel to work the next time when your shovel wears out. We just, I kind of look at it as some of these things, they have a finite lifespan. And as they're working on stuff, these tools do wear out. And by no means are we giving enough money to bolster their toolboxes. It's more of just to help with that replacement as tools break and wear out. But I, I understand your concerns on that as well.
Chris?
Yeah, and that, that's where I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm in a little bit different place than Rick is I don't inherently have a problem with supporting expensive tool equipment, you know, tool replacement. But, but I'm very uncomfortable, not just with this, with the new people, but I mean, across the board. I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with, with, with no tracking when it comes to the expenditure of public money. I, I, that, that really, that, that is creating a great deal of discomfort. So, you know, I, I can support the concept of assisting with tool purchase, but I, I want financial accountability.
And as a management team at Fleet, we, we, the, the mechanics are subject to audits of their toolboxes. And our service writer does monitor tool, borrowing tools from, from person to person. So, you know, we're not, we're not seeing mechanics that are coming in with just a crescent wrench and then they're borrowing tools from somebody else. If that helps at all, but, because we do, we do pay attention to that. It's one of the things that is required for them to do their job. If they don't have the appropriate amount of tools and, and meet the minimum requirement list, then that becomes an issue for us that we're going to handle.
I would just rather have us do it through some other system that requires things like receipts rather than, than the allotment process. I mean, I've worked for a lot of bureaucracies and, and none of them just gave me money to, to cover costs that I obviously could incur in my job and, and, and get put it in my paycheck. And then it was entirely up to me to make it all work out in the end. I, I've never been in that situation and I'm, and I frankly wouldn't want to be in that situation as an employee. I would rather be financially accountable so that nobody can say, well, hey, you know, whatever, whatever. So I, I, I'm not comfortable with the allotment process as currently practiced.
Okay. Well, one other thing to consider, and I don't know if, if this weighs in on this or not, but when we combined our fleet department together, there was a few of the departments that provided all their tools. And when we started fleet, we said, no, you have to bring your own tools in. So a lot of these mechanics that weren't ever required to have these, you know, made a, a pretty sizable investment when they had to move over to fleet, you know.
Uh, Rick?
Let me make a comment on that, Tom. One of the things I discovered in talking to the various dealerships in Pocatello and around eastern Idaho was that if they hire a new mechanic, someone who's just graduated from a training program and probably has a pretty minimal toolbox, most of those dealerships do have a way of helping a guy get started. And it's a specific allocation that allows them to go to Matco or Snap-on or a good tool dealer and buy a, a starting set of tools. And those companies also have very lucrative finance programs for those tools with those guys. So you can buy a $100 ratchet and pay for it over two or three weeks or a month or two, whatever's necessary to make that happen. But I, I think there's a difference between a beginning mechanic and a journeyman guy who's been around 20 years, who's probably got a pretty full, filled toolbox. And as I looked through the, the list of tools that you're requiring that Heather sent out just a few minutes ago, it's a pretty simple toolbox. I've got most of that stuff in my toolbox and Lord knows I'll never wear them out because I'm not a full-time mechanic. I don't work on the big stuff and I don't use air wrenches. I don't have a compressed air source, so my stuff's all hand tools. But over the years, as I've worked at dealerships and, and worked with mechanics, the guys who've been in the business for any time at all have got these tools. Yes, they need replaced. You can break a socket or twist off a hex wrench or a screwdriver. That happens and you need to replace them. But I think that's just part of providing your own tools when you go to work. When I worked as a salesman, I got no allocation for driving my car around town all day. I got no fuel allowance, no insurance coverage. That was expected, that I provide a vehicle to do my job. And I think the same thing applies here with our mechanics.
Understood. And, and the one thing I would encourage you to look at it is just not, this money I really don't think is going to buy more tools. This is more of just to replace stuff that we're wearing out. You know, and, and one thing that, with the dealership, they work at flat rate. And so when that flat rate happens, they're making considerably more money than our mechanics are. Do you know what I mean? And, and so flat rate's a very lucrative business to be in if you're a, a good mechanic. And that's one of the, the issues that we've had is trying to compete with flat rate, you know, to get, to get people in. Um, and that's one of the, the issues that we've had is trying to compete with flat rate, you know, to get, to get people in. Um, not saying that that's.
One of the, the comments I had from one of the dealerships was that as their mechanics. Had more certifications, ASE certifications, their flat rate that they earned also increased. So as they work toward achieving more and being more productive. For the dealership and more qualified to do additional work, then their flat rate increased. And I, I think frankly, that's a pretty good program, uh, that I don't know whether we, we should work on that or not. I don't know how that would work into what. Our guys are doing, where one day they're working on a garbage truck and the next day it's a police car. But I think those things are important. Not only to achieve success in the program and efficiencies, but also to encourage people to continue to train and be better at their jobs.
Hey, uh. It looks like we have a question by Linda and then Claudia.
Um, again, not, not a question, but a comment. Um, I, I just, in my experience, there are lots of. Jobs that do provide allowances for different things, especially in the public. Sector. Uh, I think it's actually fairly common, whether it be uniforms or. Uh, gas mileage or, you know, whatever the case may be. I mean, in my position as a professor. Um, I was given a budget. Uh, and how I spent that was totally up to me. Um, I did. Uh, keep receipts on the thing, you know, if I bought books or videos or, you know. Uh, whatever I needed, um, but there was an allowance. Uh, so I think those kind of allowances. To do a job, and as I said, especially in the public. Uh, sector where salaries tend to be lower, um, is really not that uncommon. So I'm, I'm not particularly uncomfortable with the idea.
Uh, Claudia?
So, um, I, I first want to ask. Tom, if you can explain to somebody like me. What you mean by flat rate and how that compares to. How our mechanics are paid? Can you explain that to me in, in the, in Barney style, you know, short and sweet?
Absolutely. So flat rate, if, let's say you're replacing a water pump on a two thousand and ten Chevy truck. You'll go to a, a book and it will, you, you have to purchase these vast database. And you'll go to this book and it'll say, it should take you two point four hours to replace a water pump on a two thousand and ten Chevy truck. Um, and then whatever that cost comes out, that's what the mechanic's going to get paid. If he does it in one hour. He just made twice as much money. But if something goes wrong and it takes him three hours, he just lost money. And so that's what flat rate is. Um, flat rate is a really great system. Um. It does have a tendency to, uh. Try and just get stuff out the door because guys want to make money and they want to keep things moving. Um, when we first started fleet, we explored different options with flat rate. Flat rate's a great program. It, it is. I. When I was young, I was a flat rate mechanic myself, you know, and, and so it's great. Um. The difference we have with our fleet department and, and fly rates are definitely something we can look at in the future, you know, as Rick was alluding to. Um. We just own all of our assets, you know, and, and we just want to get it out the door the best we can. Uh, the other thing that's really difficult in the line of work that we're in. Is they don't have flat rate books for a street sweeper. They don't have flat rate books for a garbage truck. They don't have flat rate trucks for bigger equipment. And so trying to set that up would be, you know, a real difficult task of. Uh, you know, trying to determine how long it takes to replace an engine in a street sweeper because there's no database for that.
So then, so then what you're. Saying is that our, our mechanics get paid by the hour. Per hour, they just get paid per, they get paid per hour. To come to work and they work whatever their shift is. Is that, is that the difference?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, well, um.
Actually track their productivity if we have. If they're working, let's say on a vehicle that is in the flat rate book, because we do have flat rate stuff. We compare their productivity and we document that against, against flat rate. So we are auditing the, as much as we can.
Right, right, right. Okay, so then, thank you, Tom, for that. Um, so my, my other comment then is, um. When you have to purchase things as part of your job. To be, to do your job. You, um, you do get a, a tax benefit for that. So employees should be encouraged if they're buying tools. To make sure that their accountant. Or whoever's filing their taxes. Knows that they're spending X amount of dollars on these specific things in order to be able to do their job. But I'm, I'm still with Rick on this.
Uh, Chris?
Yeah, um, in the budget materials, um. It appears to me that we have two categories of tools, small tools and major tools. Um. Are the small tools, all tools that a mechanic would be, you know, would have in his or her. Toolbox. Well, what's, what's the difference? Are, are, do, do mechanics ever purchase major tools? What's, what are those two categories mean?
So normally the small tools and the major tools are tools that the departments are buying. Um. And they can be in, in all of the budgets. For instance, like in the street department, if. We need to go buy a, a post hole digger to dig for a gate, that would be a small tool. Um, if we've got to go buy a welder. Uh, because our, our old welder, you know, burned up, then that would be a major tool purchase.
So in the combined number, I believe, uh, um, for tho, for both small and large tools. Um, for fleet. The projected number, uh, which I'm assuming is based on past numbers. Is, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty five thousand dollars. And so. You know, I mean. I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, um. You know, the fact that we're spending fifty five thousand dollars and then we're giving thirteen hundred dollars to. I don't know how many employees, three plus how many, you know, and I, and, and, and trying to sort. Through all of this and I, um. And for me, I guess the bottom line is. I, I, I wanted, I, I want people to, to have what they need to do their job. But, you know, it's nice to have a brand new shiny tool, even if I could get another two years out of what I've got that's old and grubby. And if I've got, you know, thirteen hundred dollars a year to spend, I might just want to spiff up my, my toolkit. And, and I understand, but I'm not sure the taxpayers should be. I'm not sure that that, they should be footing the bill for, for a desire versus a need.
Hey, I've got a question by Linda and then Roger.
Um. Tom, to Chris's last point, you said you do audits as much as you can. Do you? Um. Kind of keep track of that or, or look out for that, like whether they're actually. Using the money to buy. Tools that, you know, whether they really need the tool or whether they just want a shiny new tool. I mean, does that happen? Uh, and, and are you looking out for that?
That's definitely something that, that is available to us. Um. I, I really, I, I. I hesitate saying this, but we have such great guys that work for us. Um, you know what I mean? And. I personally don't think there's any shenanigans going on. Um, but. We watch really close.
That's what I'm asking is whether you, you, you feel that you're seeing that people are doing that. Are they abusing? This privilege or, or not?
Yeah, that would be really difficult to tell unless we went out and probably did a weekly inspection of toolboxes, which is something that, you know, we could definitely do. Um. What we do.
Your sense is people are not doing that?
I, I, and maybe it's my naivete, but, uh. You know, I, I'm definitely, I try and be a glass half-full guy and, uh, but with my wa, eyes wide open to the fact that. Uh, one of the quickest ways to find out if a mechanic's got what he needs is how often he's borrowing tools from his neighbor. And we watch that very, very closely, um, you know, and. Uh, it's also, uh, we watch and see, you know, oh, I, I, I need to borrow. Uh, the shops, this or that, that they should have. Uh, you know what I mean? Whatever the, like a, a small scanning or a volt meter. We, we definitely watch that very closely.
Hey, thank you. So we have a question by Bray and then, uh, Ortega.
I, I just want to make a comment. Um. We're kind of doing this in a vacuum because we don't know what other mechanics are making. We don't know if our tool allotment helps our mechanics get back closer to par. There, you know, there are all those factors that are not part of this discussion. And when we're talking about trying to find pay equity. Between city employees and others and finding value in our employees staying with us and things like that. Uh, we don't know what a factor this tool allotment is in terms of that equity. And, uh, I would suggest that this probably is a. The type of discussion we need to have in budget formation.
Roger, why don't I suggest that we have them do a comparison and maybe even before we get into the budget, have them present. That to the council at a study session, kind of what we're looking, looking at or. Or if they can pull it together fast enough, uh, uh, one of our. Meetings at two, two, on the third Wednesday of the month or Thursday of the month when we meet. That, uh, we can have that discussion. Would you be, all right, okay, sounds good. So we've got a question by Claudia and then by, uh, Chris Stevens.
So, uh, I just want to. I just want to go on record as saying that my opposition to this has nothing to do with my thinking that there's any. Shenanigans, Tom, and none at all. I don't, I, I inherently. Trust people until I know that I cannot. So my assumption is that your mechanics are. Doing everything that they're supposed to do and, 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 you know, living, living the right life, but. I'm just philosophically opposed to the taxpayers. Paying for this, that, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So just for the.
Understood, under, yeah, understood.
Thank you, uh, Chris.
Yeah, I wanted to make the same point that, that so, uh, so that I'm not misunderstood. Um, I, this is not because I think anybody's, you know, uh, stealing the sheep. Um, but I also feel. If, if someone says to me, you know, hey, how come our mechanics, you know, get, get a tool allotment? What that, what is that all about? For me to say to them, hey, they're really great guys and, you know, which they are and we trust them, which we do. Is not necessarily, um. A, 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 and a, a responsible response from an elected official in my view. I want to be able to say. Look, here's how we know that that money is being, that your money is being well-spent. Um, and in fact, it allows me to really aggressively. Um, defend and be in the corner of our employees. And say, look, you know, they assiduously account for every dime of your money that they're spending. You know, yahoo for them and they are totally on top of it. And that's where I want to be. I don't want to be giving answers that I can't substantiate. Um, be, because I think that does a disservice. To, to employees and to the city credibility in general.
So it looks like Rick had a question and then a minute ago Skylar. Turned his camera on. Did you want to make some comments, Skylar? Did you just want to show us your smiley face?
Well, I'm always happy not to show my smiling face. But yeah, I, I just wanted to share a couple of things whenever it was appropriate.
Okay, let's have Rick go ahead and ask questions and then, uh, we'll, we'll turn the time to you.
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment. I think a, a pay equity comparison is going to be very difficult. Because of the different kinds of vehicles that are people are working on. I think you're going to have a very hard time. Finding mechanics who are comparatively trained. In working on buses and working on. Street sweepers and garbage trucks and police cars and parks and wreck vehicles that are fifteen years old. I don't know where you're going to find that kind of expertise across such a broad range.
Rick, you just went, you just went silent on us. We see you talk, there you go.
Andrew, maybe I'm talking too loud.
There, there you go. We're sounding, you're, you got, you got passionate, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, maybe so. I, I don't know where we're going to find. A, uh. A, a place to, to reasonably compare. Our employees who are, who are the techs who are doing this work. Who are working across such a broad range of kinds of equipment. And whether the ASE skills that we find in the dealerships around town and the mechanic shops around town really compare. I don't know if ASE has a certification for a street sweeper mechanic or a garbage truck. And those are, those are specialty skills that are learned over time. Or maybe factory training. And I think this can be really, really difficult to do. So. I hope the council doesn't have extremely high expectations of what this study is going to result in.
Well, Councilman Cheatham, what I. What I was going to suggest is we have them do a comparison with other cities and what other cities are doing. Tom has something and then I promised Skylar, but Tom, go ahead.
Well, and one thing, uh, Rick, that brought up a really good point, um. As another reason for, uh. Hat, trying to have a robust tool allotment is. You know, if, if you're working at a dealership, you may only need what we call three eights to a half inch sockets. Cause you're dealing with small nuts, small bolts. Well, one day, uh, one, one of our mechanics can be working on a lawnmower where he needs really teeny wrenches. And then the next day he's working on a garbage truck where he needs the biggest wrenches you can get. And so these minimum tool requirements is just enough to kind of get them in the ballpark. Um, they've made on their own, I, I, I know for sure considerable investments because of the complexity and the. The difference in the equipment that they work on. That was one of the things we really pushed with fleet is. We want everybody in the shop, if a lawnmower comes in broken, they can fix it, or if a garbage truck comes in, they can fix it. And so to Rick's point, it really has had to make them expand their, their toolbox to, to try and. And compensate for that. And, you know, when you start working on a large garbage truck and. Uh, this hack actually happened at the street department. We had a gentleman that was, that was trying to remove a leaf spring and the. The wrench broke, hit him in the head, split his eye open. You know, it was just a rough deal. So. Um, stuff breaks, stuff, it, you know, comes apart. Um, i- it's just kind of a different world that we live in. Working in a city because it is so diverse, as Councilman Cheatham says. Um. And so that's something that, that, to think about there. Um, it's definitely, you know, tools wear out. And so that's something that we, when we first approached this, when we were designing fleet, that's. Kind of why we, we pushed for this. Um. I can tell you right now, we're, we're actively. Uh, working with ISU right now, uh, to try and get some internships going with the. The auto, the automotive repair side as well as the diesel side because. Uh, it is difficult to attract mechanics, uh, right now. It. Uh, to, to Councilman Cheatham's point, flat rate is very lucrative. Um, they can make a lot of money. Um, you know, I've. Uh, I've talked with a lot of guys that, you know, I'm a, I'm a gearhead, I'm a car guy. So I know people and they're like, I, I, I can't work for that. You know what I mean? And so not to say that it's horrible by any means, but. Um, it's hard to compete with the dealerships, especially having a, you know, a large equipment dealership out south of town. It's very difficult to find, you know, good, heavy equipment mechanics. So.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Skylar, uh, and after Skylar, uh, Claudia has a question. It looks like Roger has a question also. So. We'll go Skylar, Claudia, Roger.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Skylar Beebe, Public Transit Director. Um. So I just wanted to briefly, uh, I, I can't really add too much of what's been shared with Tom and others, but. I just wanted to mention that to Tom's point of replacing tools, um, I know that our guys have, have probably replaced at least. A thousand dollars worth of tools almost every year. Because our, our tools regularly break, um, and it's based a lot of the, the jobs that they're doing. Um, you know, we've had some damages to our buses the last couple of weeks and we've been able to do those repairs in-house. So our, our. Our guys are mechanics, they're auto body, they're a little of everything. Because of their expertise and, and, you know, one thing that we do know is if, if we were to lose one or all of our mechanics. It'd be a, a hard thing to find others that can work on the buses because they're just so unique in so many ways. I, I definitely appreciate and understand the points that are being made and discussed and. And part of my overall intention of was in kind of bringing this up was right now, we, we, I, I want to make sure we're. right now, we, we, I, I want to make sure we're being uniform across the city. And, and right now it's just not because we have our mechanics who aren't getting, you know, the same amount as the Fleet mechanics, but yet we're doing the same, similar jobs. And so that was kind of the intention for my end was to make us uniform across the board for all mechanics and if anything for this fiscal year and if it comes up later. But overall, I just wanted the council to understand that was my intention is to be uniform for the, at least this fiscal year across the board for all mechanics. And, you know, and, and, and so whatever direction that goes, you know, we'll, we'll work with it.
Thank you. Claudia.
Um, so Tom, this list that I'm looking at, what would you say that list would cost? Is that a $5,000 list? Is that a $3,000 list? What would you guess?
So here's the tricky part on that. We have stores that sell discount tools. I hate to use names, but I'm sure you know they're, they're out.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about real tools, like now Matco, I mean, Matco or Snap-on. I mean, a, a good quality tools. What would, what would this list cost?
That meant, that list with the box, you're, you're probably getting really close to $10,000.
Okay.
It's, it's very, a prime example would just happen this morning. The street department needed a new tool for, they were jackhammering concrete. It's an automotive type tool they got. We bought it from the Snap-on dealer this morning and it was $400 just for that tool. So they just, it adds up really fast.
Right, right. Well, I, I, I think, I think that I, I'm, I'm with Roger on, on the fact that this is a conversation that we should have as part of budgeting because it, it seems like it's a budget question, a budget issue. And I, I personally would like a little more information with regard to what our mechanics are making, not compared to mechanics at a car dealership, but what they're making compared to mechanics that do the same type of work in other, in other cities. And, but I, I, I think, I think I agree with Roger that this should be a conversation we have as part of budgeting.
And we are currently doing that, that, at this time as well. We, through our Fleet Development Program, it's been very, it's been heartwarming because we have had so much help from Fleet Departments across the country. We can get on the internet and we can talk to somebody in Columbus, Ohio, and they're just more than willing to help. And so we have a huge network of people that, that we've partnered with through the development of this program. And so we actually are doing that very thing, trying to find some sort of common ground with other agencies because, you know, nobody really works on a street sweeper other than us. And so we're, we're working hard to try and do that very thing that you're talking about.
Well, and I'm not surprised to hear you say that, Tom. You're always one step ahead.
No.
All right. So we have Roger and then it looks like Chris and then it looks like Linda.
First of all, I looked on the internet just a second ago and one deep socket was running about $50. If you break one in your socket set, it takes you about, and that's a high-grade socket. You know, you can go out to some of the places here and buy a whole socket set for less than $50. So just, just comparisons. The second thing is I do think that we do have not identical but comparable entities around us where we can see, because Western states is going to have some specialized mechanics. They run a gauntlet of repairs out there. And so we will have some comparisons. Some of the repair shops within our region for farm machinery and stuff like that, they're specialized, but they're, they're going to make us have a comparable specialization rate. So I don't think it's that difficult to find generally comparable. Exactly comparable, that's real hard. But, but you know, a guy crawling into a, a certain farm machinery and doing certain things on it, it's not going to be far different at the cost of some of the farm equipment that he stays to what we're doing with our trucks. And, and there are some large dealerships around here who service big trucks too. So I don't, I, I think we will get in the ballpark, we won't get exact. So I, I really want to just say, I really think this discussion is important. We know, we need to have equity among all of our departments in the similar roles. But I think that needs to be addressed in our budget preparation.
Chris and then Linda.
Yeah, I would like to move that we, for the remainder of this fiscal year, we bring our PRT mechanics on par with our other Fleet mechanics with the understanding that during budget discussion for the next fiscal year, this entire topic is going to be addressed, you know, in a, in a much fuller way.
Second.
I'll second that.
So we already have a second by Cheatham. Linda, do you want to, before we vote on that, do you want to?
Yeah, and, and, and maybe it doesn't really matter now, but I did want to say that I think Skylar made a good point that, you know, this comparison information is certainly helpful and I would be interested to see it. But the main purpose here was to get equity amongst all of our mechanics within the city. So I think that should be really one of our main considerations here is not necessarily how they compare, you know, to other cities or to private industry, but to make sure that we are treating all of our employees equally. So that's all I was going to say.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Stevens and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Yes.
Adamson?
Can I have it re-read back? I'm sorry.
Uh, move that for the remainder of this fiscal year, bring Pocatello Regional Transit Mechanics up to par with the other Fleet mechanics with the understanding that it will be reviewed during the budget process and will address the topic in detail.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was voting on what I thought. Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lyric?
Um, so just to be clear, that means we are like approving this proposal for now? But we will review it? Okay, then yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Okay, super. Thank you, council. We'll go ahead and, and do that. And so let's, we'll move on to agenda item number four. But before we move on to agenda item number four, I want to take a five-minute break. And so we'll take a break right now for five minutes. So please be back in five minutes. I'll do my best to start us back up in five minutes. Thank you. Counsel, I've just proven that I don't know what five minutes looks like. Five minutes to me looks like more of 10 minutes, it looks like. So I apologize for that. Why don't we go ahead and call the meeting back to order? And we'll go to agenda item number four. And that is Fleet Department update. Fleet Services and Public Works staff will be present to give counsel an update on Fleet Services activity for fiscal year 2020. Tom, I hope, yep, Tom, you're there. And Teresa, are you there? Yes, I hope anyway you're. So I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Tom.
Thank you again. Good morning. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. We're going to try, we're going to go over a little today. We'll, we'll try and make it pretty quick. Some of the stuff you've already heard before. But there's some really good nuggets in here that we can talk about as we move on. So first off, just have our mission statement. You've heard it before. But we really strive to, to follow that and to try and manage our assets as best we can to, you know, keep people working. That's our main focus at Fleet is to, is to limit downtime and keep our, keep our people working. Some of the key accomplishments, these are things that we've talked about in the past. So we won't dwell too much on them. But when you start a brand-new department, we found out really quick, there's a whole lot of things you got to think about that you, that you never even think about until you're in the middle of it. So one of the big things that we first got going was policies and procedures for both Fleet as well as our purchasing division. Trying to get some sort of, you know, a format together so that we can track things better as well as make sure we're doing things by the book. We got our, we got our asset management, our vehicle management program up and running. It's called AssetWorks. This is what enables us to capture data from our technicians as they perform work. They, they, they clock into a job. They, they, they document everything they've done to that piece of equipment. They document the parts, the costs, and then they clock out of the job when they're done. And then we use those work orders to build departments. Fleet is a, is a department that it's kind of a hybrid. We have a, a flat transfer fee that we, that we charge all departments for overhead, for the asset management program, for stuff like that. And then we charge for parts and labor per piece of equipment. Staffing levels, this is something we're really proud of. We, we were able to get to, through attrition, we were able to eliminate four mechanic positions and streamline that down to a smaller amount. To end that last budget season, we did relinquish one of those positions. So we're now down to three vacant positions. That was one thing that during budget season, if you remember, we asked if we could just leave those kind of stagnant for now because we don't know, it's just our first year into this thing, you know. When we talked to most of these cities that started a central fleet, and I'm sure you, you heard me say it, you know, when we first started this is you're going to have a six, eight, 10-year before you're really running all, all cylinders here. So we just want to be able to, you know, adapt as we, as we need to so that we don't end up in a bad spot. We're really excited and we'll get into that a little bit later because I feel like we're a little bit ahead of the curve compared to those, some of those other agencies. So we're excited for that. We developed a standardized preventative maintenance program. That's, that's the key to this, this whole program is making sure that, that we have a preventative maintenance program so that we can fix, we can repair things on our time instead of shutting down jobs to perform emergency repairs.
So Tom, just a minute. It looks like Roger has a question.
Tom, I just got to get things in my mind. I got to have the picture adjusted a little bit. Did we just do terminology changes from two lead mechanics to two shift foremen? Or, or are the foreman mechanics?
Yes, we just switched the, the name, the job description to two shift foremans as opposed to lead mechanics. At Fleet, we run two shifts. We run an early shift and a late shift so that we can cover some of the departments that come in early and some of the departments that stay late. Can I answer your question, sir?
Yep, thank you. Just a minute. Chris, you're, you unmuted? Nope, you've, okay.
Okay. As I said, okay, the PM program is something that we really want to hang our hat on. This is, in our opinion, this is what makes, makes or breaks this program. And so we've, we'll talk a little bit later on in the presentation about how we've accomplished that and, and some of the evidence that shows how that's working. We also implemented our own parts store in our facility. This is something that we're seeing benefits every day. We have an actual semi that shows up every day and unloads a couple of pallets of parts at our facility. We have a, a parts person that works for us. He's employed through NAPA. And he is hopping like you wouldn't believe. He runs back and forth. And we're getting our inventory built as we're, as we're collecting data on these vehicles. Our inventory is getting better and better and better to the point that we're hoping to be at an 85% on-demand facility. We're, we're getting really close to that now. And so what that means is nine times out of 10, if a mechanic needs a part, it's going to be on the shelves. The best part about the NAPA store is they own all of the inventory. So we don't pay for it until we need it. You know, if we were to have to get our own parts guy and get an inventory program going, it would be, you know, an upfront cost of a couple hundred thousand to get the amount of inventory they have on the shelf. So that's something that we've really been happy with and it's, it's just working out seamlessly. The other thing that we've done is some rightsizing. We're not done with this by any means. But when we first talked, I was looking through some of our presentations from years gone back in 2017. We evaluated about, I think it was 69 assets that we thought, we saw through fuel records that were being underutilized, but that was just a best-case scenario. We were hoping to get $103,000 of revenue from the sale of those. This year, we were able to get rid of 43 assets and we actually surpassed our, our, the money we were hoping to get by a few thousand dollars. And we're getting ready right now to send out another group of, of under, of assets that, that appear to be underutilized based on fuel records. So then we'll meet with department heads and decide if those are truly underutilized or if there's something that's, that needs to be maintained. Another key accomplishment was educating departments on, on purchasing. Idaho bid law is very, very tricky and challenging and there's a lot of caveats to it. And so through HR, we've had our staff get into the management training program for employees and are teaching managers how to better identify what items that need bid and that don't need bid so that we make sure that we're following these, these rules as best as we can. We've talked a lot about alternative energy and electric vehicles this morning. That's something that we've, we've been working really hard on this year. First off, I just want to commend our chief shy and the, and the Pocatello Police Department staff. We purchased 10 hybrid Ford Explorers. They are, they are turning out to be a wonderful addition to our fleet. We're seeing fuel savings almost cut in half on these, on these vehicles. You know, they're roughly, you know, a thousand or $2,000 more to purchase, but the return on that investment, you know, it's short as a year and a half to two years when you, when you start factoring the fuel costs. The one big thing that we're, we need to start working towards is start training our technicians more on these newer vehicles. That's one of the, the things where we've been spending some money on specialized equipment for the shop is these new diagnostic tools. Nowadays, you just have to plug a car in to find out what's wrong with it. You don't just stick your ear to the engine like the, the good old days. So as we move down the road to get more towards electric vehicles, there's going to be some upgrades that we're going to need to make to our infrastructure as well as some training for our technicians. We've looked into a lot of compressed natural gas for our garbage trucks. That's something that I've, I've kind of been chasing that technology because we've, we've talked with several communities that kind of jumped onto that too quick. And the trucks weren't quite ready for that and they, they kind of got stuck with a lot of expensive lemons. And so we were real cautious to not dive into that pool until the technology caught up with it. The technology is definitely catching up with it. This is something that we're going to, we're going to look at a lot more. We're going to do some demos on these. The CNG has a bad record or a bad history. But they have come light years in the past few years with these things. The trucks are quieter, they have more power. The, one of the big concerns with CNG was that the tanks exploded. That's not necessarily a fun thing to have a neighborhood with a bomb in it. But they've tended, they've got that fixed to where that's not, not as big of an issue anymore. We also looked at charging stations and filling stations. As we were developing the fuel site plans, we looked at potentially putting in rapid fill CNG, rapid fill station. Unfortunately, we don't have any infrastructure in town to fuel these trucks if we were to switch our fleet over to CNG right now. So we would have to build that infrastructure. And the fast fill, which means it fills them up in, you know, five to 10 minutes, is very, very expensive. So if this is the road we would like to go down, we're, we're going to look into what they call slow fills. And that's basically you plug the truck in overnight to a gas line and then it just slowly fills the tank overnight. Another thing we're looking at on the, on the sanitation trucks is Another thing we're looking at on the, on the sanitation trucks is when you look at the national statistics, the garbage truck is the third largest user of fossil fuels in the transportation industry, you know, followed only by buses and over-the-road trucks. I've had conversations with Bannock County at the landfill. A compressed natural grass truck can also run methane. The landfill produces an abundance of compressed methane. They run their methane through a scrubber and a compressor. And then they pump it into a large generator. They generate power and they sell it back to, they sell the power to idle power. I don't know what the investment would be, but there is an investment that you can put one more stage onto that treatment. And then you can clean it. You get some of the, the knocks out of it and, and some other nasty elements, and then you can burn it in a vehicle. So I've, I've spoken with the Public Works Director at the landfill and he's very excited to look into this and see what it could maybe hold. And for me, it's just a kind of a neat little story that you're picking up garbage to make the fuel that you're using to pick up the garbage. It, it's kind of a neat deal. And they're there at the end of the day dumping the trash so they can pull up and fuel on their way back to the shop. So it's kind of a neat, neat deal that we're looking into and, and hopefully we can get some traction with that. And see, see where we go from there. Electric vehicles, over the last few years, it, it's kind of like the compressed natural gas. We've watched that very closely. The total cost of ownership on those is definitely gotten about equal with, with internal combustion engines. In the past, you know, you needed some of the federal subsidies to make that work out. And those are some things that we weren't, you know, we didn't get those subsidies. But now you're getting to the point where we can start buying those for pretty much comparable price to what, you know, a conventional vehicle is. So when you start looking at their kind of a wash in cost, that, you know, you can start looking at what the environmental impact is and what a benefit that would be. So moving forward on that, that, and I don't know if that's a discussion for today, Mayor, or not, but and maybe that could be a budget season is, is exploring how aggressive we would like to get and what, you know, how deep we want to get into this, because there's gonna be some, you know, some upfront costs from charging stations and purchasing vehicles. And we've been, we've been researching different grants through the governor's office, through DEQ as well as idle power. There's three different kinds of basically chargers you can get. There's a slow charge that takes ten hours. There's a fast, a second tier that takes four hours, and then there's a supercharger, they call it, that you can charge stuff for thirty to forty-five minutes. And so as we move forward in this, that's just something that we can discuss more. I don't know if today's the day or not, Mayor, of how aggressive we want to get on this and, and, and move forward with it.
Yeah, Tom, I don't think today's the day to break into that discussion. I don't think anybody's prepared for that right now. And so but with that, it looks like Councilwoman Stevens has a question.
Yeah, well, first a co- a comment. Tom, I continue to be incredibly impressed by the, you know, the fact-based, organized, highly literate presentations that you always bring to us. And also, as Claudia mentioned earlier, the fact that, you know, you've already answered and addressed half of my questions. And so I continue to really be grateful that, that we Pocatellans have you willing to work for us in our city. So thank you. And I, I just wanted to mention that, you know, since you've been following the EDs and other, other alternat- altern- alternatives to traditional fossil fuel vehicles. Those are the kinds of things that seems to me really dovetail with the Clean Energy Task Force. And part of why, Mr. Mayor, part of why I would like to revisit that, that resolution is that I think in presentations like the one Tom is giving us, we could actually begin to create some goals to help guide council and budgeting decisions, to help guide employees in, in, you know, decisions that they're making. And, and de-silo some of these conversations. And so I just wanted to make that remark that I, I really hope that when we are talking Clean Energy Task Force, we can also be talking fleet transition to, to clean energy.
Sounds good. Thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. We've also researched, I, I talked about that a minute ago, about potential clean energy alternatives at the, at the fuel site. Right now, I don't think the, the proverbial juice is worth the squeeze on that. But if we decide to go down this natural gas, compressed natural gas road, this is something we'll definitely have to look at, because there's, there's not a, like, an actual CNG station here locally that we could rely on. So below, you can see we have six hundred assets. These are the, some of the, or these are the departments that we've been helping out throughout this year. All right.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Roger, sorry.
I, I have a question, Tom, with, you know, when we look at right sizing and we got six hundred assets, it seems to me that the more uniformity we can produce during, with those assets, the greater efficiencies we get. So if, if we have, you know, seventy-five or a hundred different sized tires that we have to buy for six hundred assets, we're not gonna buy in volume. But if we get it down to, you know, much smaller volume of, or number of tire sizes, we can buy in volume and we can, we can create some efficiencies. Is that something you're working towards? And I know it's hard because we have such a longevity in, you know, we spend thirty or forty years with some vehicles.
Absolutely. And the department heads have been really great this year as, as we've been bidding equipment and vehicles. We're trying our best to try and get some uniformity in that so that we can take that, take advantage of that very thing you're talking about, these economies of scales. In fact, on the, the third bullet down, you can see we're developing a standardized vehicle ordering guidelines template to where we can try and, and do the very thing that you're saying. Try and get as much equality amongst these vehicles as we can so that we can not only manage our inventory better, but then we can actually increase our level of service, because we're gonna have that particular thing on the shelf no matter if it's a water department or a street department or a parks and rec vehicle.
Well, and just with the police department, if the explorers and the pickups we ordered in last year all use the same tire, and I know there can be a difference between passenger tire and a light truck. But sometimes if you're buying in a volume, the, the same size in different ratings can still come out efficient.
Absolutely.
Probably like truck on a explorer or something. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're also really fortunate that our local.
Tom, we also have a question by Ortega.
Okay.
No, go ahead, Tom. You can finish your thought and then I'll ask you. Go ahead.
I just, we, we've worked with our local tire, tire dealers as well. We use what's called, it used to be called the WISKA, is what it's been called forever. It's got a new acronym now, but the Northwest, there's a big consortium of, of cities throughout the Northwest that puts out a, a large tire bid to Michelin and to Bridgestone and to Goodyear. And the local dealers can either choose to accept that bid amount or not. And we've been very fortunate that we've been able to use that. So we're leveraging a price for the whole Northwest and to be able to get tires at a, at a very reasonable cost, so.
Go ahead, Claudia.
Um, can I ask you? You, you mentioned a, a last slide that there's a, a standard fee that you charge, a standard rate that you charge departments for a service. Is that is that fee per service or per hour? Because I know that you've said to me in the past that, I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's, there's a rumor mill out and about that says, you know, that Fleet charges two hundred and fifty dollars for an oil change. And you explained to me that, when I asked you about it, that, that in fact, when a vehicle comes in for an oil change, you guys look at everything. And if there's other things that need to be repaired, you do it right then at that time. And so that's why sometimes, well, they took the car in for an oil change and it ended up costing two hundred and fifty dollars, but you fixed forty-three other things. But when you bill a department, is it, is there a fee per service that you tally up or is it a fee per hour that, for, for how much time the, the mechanics are working on the vehicle?
Yes. So when we started Fleet, we, there was a, a plethora of options to, to try and figure out a way to fund this. The way we, we went about it is we built kind of a hybrid. So we have an asset management program. We have a the management team that runs Fleet. And we split that out to all the departments that have vehicles based upon the amount of vehicles they have. So we did what is called a vehicle equivalent unit, a VEU. That was something that was designed by the Army Corps of Engineers back in the fifties. And basically what it says is one, one pickup truck requires a certain amount of work. That is one VEU. Well, a garbage truck correlates out to be about thirty VEUs. And it's just kind of a, an aggregate of how you try and compare things back to back. So we have a flat transfer every month that we've charged the departments based upon their vehicle count. For most departments, you know, it's not a horribly large amount of money. But it just covers the overhead of the building. It covers the asset management program based upon those VEUs. Then when the vehicle comes in, the technicians make the repair and then we charge the department based upon the hours of service and what the parts were. And so you, you are, you are correct that, that, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. I'll show you a nice little graph here that later on that illustrates these two hundred, these two hundred and fifty dollar oil changes, how great they are and how good they're working for us.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that.
So key goals moving forward, we talked and Councilman Bray brought this up about right sizing. This is something that we're never going to stop doing. I think this is a key to try and get some of our antiquated equipment out of here and try and just get this fleet modernized. In purchasing, we want to, you know, develop some standardized vehicle ordering guidelines. The other thing we're looking at is getting into local cooperative agreements with the surrounding communities to see if we can get more buying leverage by incorporating some of the surrounding communities to, you know, we can put together and and try and get lower costs on stuff that we bid on. Vehicle registration is, is especially during COVID has been very problematic. So we're always looking at ways we can streamline that and make it better. One of the big things that, that we're, we're trying to educate people on is about piggyback purchasing. I know a couple of weeks ago, we had a, a lot of piggyback purchases that, you know, raised some questions, which are good questions. Piggybacking is, is a great tool that agencies have to be able to expedite the process as well as use a national, you know, sometimes national bigger buying group to try and get a better price. For instance, a garbage truck, you know, on October first, when it's a new budget year, we go and we want to order a garbage truck. The bidding process can take upwards of six weeks before it finally makes it in front of you guys for approval. What we're seeing is if we start ordering garbage trucks in December or January, we're not getting them until December or January the next year. And then we come in and have to see you folks to do a budget amendment because we ran out of authority because the trucks were delayed. Piggybacking has been able to compress that process a lot more so that we can try and get these vehicles sooner, so that we're not trying, or we're not double performing work. We come in and ask for the money at budget. We come in and ask for approval at the council meeting. Then we have to come back and ask you again for a budget amendment because we missed our, our end of the year. The nice thing about piggyback purchases, we always compare them to local as well as we get quotes from other agencies. If, if a piggyback purchase does not make sense, we will not piggyback that vehicle or any equipment. If it doesn't, you know, we're very selfish. If it doesn't benefit us, we're not gonna do it. Some alternative stuff, we talked about that quite a bit. The only other thing I can touch on there is there's been a push for electric garbage trucks as well as street sweepers. They finally got some garbage trucks turned out in the Northwest, up in the Seattle, Portland areas. Our, our, our rep that sells those came with his hat in his hand and said it's not going out, not, not working out so well right now. They had to pull a bunch of those back out and do some recalls on them. And so that's something we're watching really closely, but we definitely don't want to jump in with both feet on the heavy vehicle end of it until that technology can catch up. But the way technology moving nowadays, it's not, I don't imagine it's gonna take long. We always are looking to waste increased productivity and efficiencies. And then now that we're starting collect data, we want to get a cap, a citywide capital replacement plan, a holistic approach of how to manage the fleet as a whole, not just department by department.
Roger.
This is just a little bookkeeping type of thing or clerical thing. I noticed in our department, we don't list Fleet on our, our website. And it seems to me like if our website is going to be up to date, it ought to show Fleet because we do have a, a person that runs that, that program there. And you kind of are the umbrella person for several things. So I, I just think that our, our IT department needs to talk to our web developer and get that added to our, our webpage.
Yeah, okay. We'll def- we'll definitely reach out to IT and then get that going. Appreciate that. Some of the, some more of the key goals is we're implementing preventative maintenance goal notifications. As we've talked, that's a big, that's a big thing for us, this PM program. Mechanic training. And also we're looking at, at, towards ISU for intern programs. We talked about that a little on the last agenda item. Mechanics are be, are very difficult to recruit right now. We're having a hard time and, and we're so happy with the guys we got. And it keeps us up at night wondering who's gonna be the next generation. You know, this mechanic field's not necessarily the most popular field anymore. I, I hope that we can keep moving in a good direction that way. We also are gonna continue with the city fuel site. We got design in the process. They're almost done. COVID has wreaked havoc once again on another thing. The fuel site has taken a beating due to COVID. Everything is moving at a, at a snail's pace on that. We're trying to push that as fast as we can. It's difficult to get quotes and information from tank manufacturers. Everything's kind of behind. But we're in the process of getting bid specs ready to go for the dispensing as well as the tanks that are gonna go underground. We need to make some, some decisions on a, on a car wash if we could, a little bit more clarification. I don't know if that's a, an op- something we want to talk about today, Mayor, or another day.
So it looks like Councilmember Stevens has a question. And so let's, let's hit that question quick.
Yeah, Tom, I know I asked you this question when, last budgeting cycle when we were talking about the fuel site. But I honestly, unfortunately, cannot remember your answer in detail. So particularly with your comments about the speed at which non-fossil fuel technologies are improving, I am wondering how we're factoring that in so that we're not building a fuel site which then in ten years is obsolete, et cetera. And I, I, I realize it's kind of a pickle because we're, we're in this both-and environment and and we need a fuel site now. And so I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it a little bit.
Absolutely. We, we've had a lot of discussions about that. The biggest thing that we were looking for with our fuel site that was one of the big drivers was redundancy. Our old fuel site, as we've all known, is, it's got its, it's got its issues right now. What we struggle with is our unleaded. If we lose an unleaded tank, that shuts down PD, their, their, their biggest customer as far as unleaded goes. Then they're using P cards at stores. We've talked about the, the huge benefit we have in cost, having our own facility. So what we've decided to do at the fuel site is instead of going with, you know, really large tanks, we're going with multiple smaller tanks. Relatively speaking, they're twelve thousand gallons, which is what we, we have currently. But if you look at most gas stations, they can get upwards of twenty to twenty-five thousand gallon tanks. And so we haven't seen any And so we haven't seen any breakdowns in the fuel delivery system. And so we're trying to size these tanks so they're not too small. But we have redundancy as well. And so 12,000 gallons is about what we we feel comfortable with right now. So we'll have four of those because we can always order fuel more frequently. It's just the redundancy that we're really chasing with this deal. So but yes, it is a fine line to walk.
Well, right, and so if, you know, with the experience with the new Ford Explorers hybrids, you know, and theoretically, you know, in five years, the they might have EVs that are comparable to those hybrids. You know, I mean, I not now, but at some point, I would love to just talk with you about how we don't end up having built a fuel site, which is, you know, is not what we're gonna, we're not what we need in 10 years. And like I say, I'm I that's 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 a pickle in which you find yourself. It's not a pickle that you've created.
Right, and I I understand, yeah, that's a a tough one is, you know, it's just like with PD or or fire, you know, our street departments 24/7, our sanitation departments. So if if I was the one writing a check, I'd have four 25,000 gallon tanks. You know, just because I'm that nervous Nellie that can't sleep at night worrying about it. But I I think the 12,000 gallon tanks is is getting us in a direction of, I think, where you're leading. But it's definitely something we'll have to, we'll keep a close eye on.
Hey, thank you, Tom. And then you mentioned the Wash Bay. And council, as I reviewed the discussion that we had about that, I've asked Tom to, unless there's any objections, I've asked Tom to go ahead and include that in his presentation to when he brings it to us on the discussion about the the fuel site. Because we're going to need a an office to be able to run the the pumps from. We're going to need a restroom in that area. And in order to to do that, instead of building two or three different buildings, it made sense to me to just include it all in one. And so unless there's an objection, Tom will be bringing that with with the fuel site included on the or the the Wash Bay included on the fuel site presentation.
Thank you. That's that's one thing we've been working with the architect on. We've we've had several requests to install a restroom. We have a porta potty down at the old one. That's not necessarily the greatest thing. And then we'll either need to build a shack to house the fuel management system, which is what we currently have. Or if we decide to go down the car wash route, we can we can integrate that into that same building. And the architect says that he could combine roof lines that would save a little bit of money. If I remember right, we talked a lot about just getting infrastructure put in. But this is something that like the mayor says that we'll we'll talk about later.
So 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 prepare, be prepared for that when he brings it, he'll bring it all together. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
So here's some of the fun stuff. This this doesn't represent all of our departments. We just, we put a few on here to kind of give you a bird's eye of of what we've what we've been trying to accomplish at fleet. I'll I'll touch first on the sanitation one. In FY19, sanitation had a very robust maintenance program. It was $660,000. Well, when we went through and designed fleet, we were able to streamline that to what we felt was a better manageable number based upon vehicle vehicle equivalent units, those V E Us we talked about. Unfortunately, they don't have a really good calculation for garbage trucks and street sweepers. And so the V E Us were really tricky for both sanitation and streets. And streets had kind of had a bad year. We had a couple of engine replacements we had to do. So those two are kind of the the bad, the bad seeds in this. But you can see that we've really tried to trim that sanitation budget down. And I think we're we're honing in on on what that's going to look like as we as we move forward. With police, you can see that in 19, they had 220,000. The budget was increased based on their vehicle counts to 244. We actually came in $7,000 less than that. You can see down in in some of the other departments, building, for instance, they were paying 7,219. We got it down to 5,100 for a $1,500 savings. You know, IT for another one is is we we were able to get that down $5,000 from the new budget, but also cut the old FY19 budget in half. So you can see just with these small departments, we've, when you add those all together, we've seen a pretty good reduction of about 200 and close to $250,000. And that doesn't include all the other departments, and we'll get to that a little bit later.
Well, Chris?
Yeah, Tom, for for the significant drops like water and parks and rec, I'm assuming that it's kind of the situation that that it's a bit of a one off because, you know, there's been a significant change. And we shouldn't expect to see that every year. But but can you just kind of talk about like what 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 went into, you know, when there's a significant drop like that, what contributed to that? I
So what we we noticed on those departments that had the big significant drops is we saw a very disproportionate reduction compared to other departments in work orders. So I don't know if if they had a really good year and stuff didn't break down, and that's going to catch up later. But it just seems like we didn't see as many water or parks and recs trucks. We hope that's a good thing. We hope that they weren't breaking down, and that's why. But like we've said, this is our first year, and that's kind of why we want to keep this this fluid. You know, they may have had a really good year where not a lot of stuff broke down, or they could have a a year like streets where they just kind of got hammered. Okay. So here is, let's talk about the $250 oil changes. One of the things in fleet that has been an overwhelming tone that we've heard from a large majority of the departments is, I'll bring my car in for an oil change that used to cost me $39.99 at Quickie Loop, and I leave and it's $250. When you get down into the nuts and bolts of that thing, that $250 isn't just an oil change. It's checking the brakes, it's rotating the tires, it's checking all the lights. We we do a large, it's it's a very extensive list of checks. And our BANE driver on fleet is to try and limit downtime. We want our people working, not waiting. And so if something is bad, for instance, if the brakes need replaced, we replace the brakes brakes at that moment. We don't send them away and then make another schedule so they can come back like you would see at a, you know, at a Quickie Loop place where a lot of times they don't even tell you your brakes are bad. So what we're seeing right here is you could, the green line is our PM program. So you can see we ramped up through February, COVID hit, we had a dip there. But you can see it's been pretty steady with our preventative maintenance program, which are scheduled repairs, which means you came in, you got your oil changed, we rotated your tires, and we fixed as many things as we can, so you don't have to come back. And you can see what the the yellow line with our trend line, the amount of reactive repairs that we have done, it's almost, you know, cut in half. And so what that's telling us is we're catching things during preventative maintenance times. And so we're not seeing those emergency repairs coming as much. Does that make sense on on what we're explaining there? So when we hear about the $250 oil changes, this right here is is the gold standard of why we do such things like that. And you can see from the previous slide that those $250 oil changes have actually not hurt their budgets. It's helped on a lot of these. So it it may be a little sticker shock when you see that bill, but it may have prevented you having three or four visits to fleet, causing downtime, causing your 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 folks not to have to or not to be able to work because that equipment's down. So we're really proud of that. I I think that shows right there the importance of a very proactive and preventative maintenance driven plan.
So Tom, we have a question by Ortega and then Stevens.
Actually, I just have a comment, Tom. I was just gonna, I'm glad you said what you said about having people down because aside from the numbers that we saw on the previous slide, this type of approach also also is shows up in a net positive productivity wise. So that that that's a double, that's a double whammy for the taxpayers, which I think is is very important to point out. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Chris.
I just don't remember after I looked at all of this stuff, and I just don't remember if you have a slide in here that addresses the the budget impact to departments. Because I'd like to have a kind of a, you know, a spiel that, you know, when I hear, hey, fleet, blah, 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 you know, that that I've got a legitimate legitimate answer.
Right, okay. So we backed up, we backed up one more slide, and I and I think this this slide might be what you're looking for here. Let's just look at utility billing as an example. Their their FY19 budget was $4,200. We looked through it, their V E Us, and we said, you have this many vehicles, this type of vehicles. We're probably going to have to charge or you're going to have to budget $12,000 to maintain that stuff properly. Because we're just guessing, you know, we didn't know, we're we're making educated guesses, I hope. But we didn't know what the condition of these equip, this equipment was. We didn't have a lot of good records to follow, not just utility billing, but everywhere. So you can see that utility billing actually is about the same as it was in FY19 as what the actual was, was $4,600, but it's $7,000 than what we we put the budget to. And you can see other ones like building above that, their 19 budget was $7,200. We recalculated and said, oh, you may only need $6,700, but we actually brought it in at 51 for a, you know, a gain of $1,500. Does that clear it up for you or clear that up for you? Okay. One of the, one of the nice things that 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 I think that I can definitely do better, and I think everyone could, is trying to track downtime. I I think that's a huge, a huge metric that that means a lot because when there's downtime and you're not able to perform a job, that that's that's when things don't go so good. So this is another one that we're really proud of. These are comebacks. This means we brought it into fleet to fix something, things didn't go so right, they came back. We don't want unhappy customers. We treat this just like a, you know, we're running a business. We want happy customers, we want happy departments. And so you can see we've worked really hard with our mechanics, our our service rider. I'll give him some, a lot of credit is Russell Simmons is his name. He pushes these guys really hard to make sure that when it leaves, it's left, it's done right, and it's not going to come back. And and you can see that we've really tried to make that as best we can. So here's the nuts and bolts. For FY20, fleet was budgeted at $1,963,000. We came in at 1,707. So based off our our budgeted, projected best case guess that we could make when we started this, we came in at about $256,000 less than what we had thought or less than than what we'd projected. When you add that there was $106,000 worth of savings when we right sized, as well as when you have 43 assets that you eliminate, we we gauge that at about roughly an underutilized vehicle costs you about $1,500 a year to maintain. There's, we we fall on some studies that have done nationwide. I mean, that gets you up into $60,000 savings. So we're looking at well over $400,000 that that we believe that fleet's been able to trim out of these, out of this budget. So we're really proud of that. I went back and the very first presentation we did back in September of 2017, we had hoped that we could get to $396,000 worth of savings. And we said, that's probably going to take us eight years. That's what everybody's telling us. And we're really excited that we've we've got that and surpassed it just a little bit in our first year. So I really want to commend Teresa Cottrell, our fleet manager, C.R. Simpson in purchasing, and and again, Russ Simmons, our service writer. Because we are very, we are running a very productive ship here. And and it's just getting better and better every day.
Thank you, Tom.
So Tom, I I have a couple of questions. I'm I'm looking at at the budget, and there's $120,000. It says purchased professional services, NAPA, IBS. What 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 are the taxpayers getting for from NAPA? Is that parts?
So what that is, is it's called an IBS store. So they opened a Napa Auto Parts store in our facility.
Right.
And so we pay them a flat fee of $10,000 a month, that's that 120,000, to manage the inventory and to run that store. So they supply an employee, and then they supply all the inventory on hand. And that's what that 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 cost is.
Okay, and then I have another question, too. There's, there's about $20,250 for clothing, boots, and coveralls. And I'm just curious, if there's only seven people, how how are we getting to $20,000? Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, that that includes the the tool allowance that we were talking about earlier. The boot, you know, the the city gives out boot allowance to all of the, we require a steel-toed boot. I can I can look at that. I don't have it off top of my head. I can get back to you on that one, though.
Yeah, if you could just email me, that'd be great. I just want to know how many people are getting that and how that breaks out.
Absolutely, I can get you that.
I like more detail. Thank you, Tom.
Tom, email that to the entire council, not just one of them.
Okay, sounds good.
Roger has a question.
Tom, you said we saved $256,000 in just your budget, but you also had a slide where we saved $247,000 in other budgets. So is your impact over $500,000 then, 60,000 fleet downsizing? Or is there a duplication?
Yeah, that that's just a duplication. We just, on that previous slide, we just wanted to show you kind of a breakdown of each department. And so that that 247 or whatever on that previous slide, we just didn't put all the departments on there. If we had put all the departments on there, it would have equaled to 256,000.
Okay.
The slide just got a little too busy, so we figured we'd leave a few off.
Chris?
Yeah, Tom, this is really a question to try to help me understand the nuts and bolts of of the budget more thoroughly. So I noticed that under fleet purchasing, there's telephone 200 and sales 700. And then under fleet admin, there's telephone 200, sales 700. And I'm trying to understand, is that a duplication for whatever reason? Or did you simply take $400 and $1,400 and and split it across two different budget categories or whatever you would call them?
Yes, that is correct. Fleet runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week because we work with with the police department or snowplows. Yeah, so that's that's what that is.
So the total is actually 400 and 1,400?
I'll have to, I don't have that in front of me. I can, I can, I'll I'll put that in the same email that I send out about the other.
Thank you. Yep, yep.
Go ahead, Tom.
All right, so I'll I'll hurry. I hate to hold you guys up. So issues are concerned moving forward. We just got to get a better handle on on how we work with our preventative maintenance program. Right now, we're pulling things from the fuel site. So as a vehicle comes into fuels, they put their mileage in, and then that can trigger an email to us to let us know we need to get that vehicle in to service it, to do our PM program. So sometimes the numbers get transposed, and and so that's still a little chaotic, and we're working through that. We're going to work harder to to educate on these piggyback purchasing. You know, if it makes sense, we're going to do it. If it doesn't, we won't. And then we we just want to keep pushing the same point across that these preventative maintenance programs are saving us money. And not only saving us money, they're saving us time. They're allowing our people to be out doing what they're supposed to be doing instead of instead of having vehicles stuck and trapped in in the shop for days and days and days. And and it's like Councilwoman Ortega said, they, when you see a $250 oil change, it tends to give you a little sticker shock. But when you dig into the the nuts and bolts of it, it's just, we're seeing that it's paying off huge dividends. And then, of course, we talked about fleet staffing. As we move forward, we're just going to keep an eye on that, you know, and and definitely not going to add any if we don't have to. But we'd like But we'd like to just kind of keep that in, in limbo so that if, uh, next, this fiscal year, we run into the, you know, another 2020, per se, uh, we're, we're ready for it.
Uh, Chris, do you have another question?
Yeah, I do. Um, so, uh, a while back, um, during a council meeting, you talked about, um, leasing, you know, uh, some heavy equipment and all the reasons why we don't want to own it and so forth, um, and which I get. Um, but I'm curious about the fact that since most banks won't, um, e- even if their bid comes in the lowest, they won't, um, they won't work with a, with a, a lease or a loan that isn't amortized over, fully amortized by the end of the lease agreement. And our situ, our, in the city, we, as I understand it, the final payment of lease number one also becomes the first payment of lease number two on new equipment. Um, and, and I'm just trying to understand what the benefit to the taxpayers, because eventually, you know, somewhere down the line, somebody's going to want, you know, the history to be fully amortized. And that, if that forces us into a more restricted financing market, you know, what's the cost benefit there?
Right. So on the lease purchase programs, uh, one of the things that's very, it, it, you, you're spot on. Some things we want to own and some things we don't, you know, and that's a, a balancing act that we, that we try and, and, and play. On the, on the lease agreements for heavy equipment, we have five payments and then we have a balloon payment at the end. So the nice thing about that is we have a guaranteed buyback. We know what we're going to get back in the end. Uh, you know, on some of these, uh, other leases, you don't know, you know, what they're going to give you at the end. Um, but that balloon payment at the end, uh, you know, that can be $100,000, let's say. That's if over the five years of the lease, you want to keep it. You only have to pay that $100,000 and you can keep it. Uh, if you start a new lease, you don't have to pay that $100,000. You just start on the new lease, um, payment. The, the nice thing, you know, and we've talked a lot about this, that, uh, that we're seeing is, uh, we can get this equipment at a cost that where we've got a, a, a new piece of equipment that's in good shape. We can get a replacement quickly. Uh, it's almost as, it's cheaper than if we had to rent one, you know, like if we went and rented a backhoe for three months, um, it's, we could have got that thing for the whole year. So we did work a lot, um, with the local lending, uh, institutions. Um, this year, you know, we, we, we worked with them. Um, unfortunately they wouldn't give us a guaranteed buyback. Um, they had, uh, some stipulations on, on the, the few banks that we worked with that they couldn't meet some of the criteria that we want, that we were hoping they would meet. Um, there's only a few lending institutions that specialize in these government leases. Um, for us, uh, you know, from my opinion on it, it's, it's been a huge benefit. Uh, we're able to get these things at a really low price. Um, because, uh, we maintain stuff really well. We take care of stuff. When they get it back, they're able to, you know, recoup some of their investment when they resell that piece of equipment. So. But you're, you're right. There's definitely a lot of philosophies that, on buying and leasing, and that's something that we're always looking at because what may be good today may not be good tomorrow.
Do you have any ballpark number like what the, and I, I, I don't, I've, I've never leased anything, including a private car. So I have virtually no experience with, with leasing, except through friends. Um, so, so I guess at the, at the end of the day, it's not, it sounds like it's pushing us into a restricted financing arena, but that arena is saving us money as opposed to what sometimes happens, which is when you're pushed into a more restricted market, you know, then, then those vendors can basically name their price.
Well, and, and what, what happened this year, when we were dealing with some of the local, uh, vendors or local banks, they just haven't been through this process much. And so we've encouraged them next year to, you know, come back. And, and so we're hoping to see a better, uh, scenario next year, because we definitely don't want to get into, you know, where there's only one game in town and they kind of set their price. So we're, we're definitely cognizant of that and are watching that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Rick?
Chris, I, over the course of my automobile career, I probably leased 250 or 300 cars. All leasing is, is a different way of financing the usage of the vehicle. That end number that Tom's talking about, the buyout of the balloon at the end, is based on the anticipated future value of that vehicle with a given number of miles or hours and specific wear and tear conditions put in place. So all you're doing is you take the original purchase price, put a balloon at the end based on what it's going to be worth. The difference is the anticipated depreciation of the vehicle and you amortize that over whatever the term of the lease is, whether it's a monthly payment or an annual payment. And then there's a money factor, which is based on that depreciating value and the balloon at the end. And that's what the payment turns out to be. What bothers me a little bit about the way we've been doing these leasing, and Tom and I've talked about this before, and I've talked to the agent we've been doing most of this with, is where sometimes we're doing piggyback bids on leases and rates have dropped dramatically since that piggyback bid was put in place. And we may be leasing at a six or eight or 10% rate that was good four or five years ago, and today's rates are in the twos and threes. And that's, that's where I get a little bit concerned about our leasing program. I personally have leased two or three vehicles over the course of the years and they worked out super for me. I like, I, I, I like leasing. It makes the purchase of a vehicle either more affordable or enables you to afford a, a more expensive vehicle. Because the, the monthly cost down or the annual cost down. It's not a bad thing. It's just, you just have to be careful how you get into it and you go into it with eyes open, knowing exactly how that lease works.
Yeah. And, and my question comes from feedback that I had from local institutions that said, hey, we came in with the lowest bid, but because our board of directors doesn't feel comfortable, um, or got burned in the past, in one case apparently. Um, you know, dealing with, with, um, leases that aren't fully amortized, that'd be their words, not mine. You know, they felt like that what they couldn't, they couldn't get into the game. Um, and that just made me, you know, it just made me wonder whether or not if we're being put into a position where we can't take the lowest bid, you know, what's the cost benefit of that? So, but I appreciate having no experience with leasing, Rick. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Well, when, when an institution says a lease isn't fully amortized, I don't think they understand how leasing works.
Okay.
Because it is fully amortized. You know what value is anticipated to be, and we used to, you know, I, I sold a particular Japanese brand of car for a lot of years. And we'd simply go to the NADA guidebook, look at a vehicle that is that same number of years old, three, four, five years. Back it off $200 from that, put a mileage restriction on it with a condition restriction on paint and glass and interior and all that. And you knew what it was going to be worth. And in many cases, because of inflation, it was worth a lot more than that.
Right.
Leases aren't a bad thing. You just have to, as I said, go into them with eyes open and understand what you're buying and what the term's going to be and what the restrictions are on the usage.
Great. Thank you both.
Yep. Another thing that we heard from the local banks is, and this isn't going to happen, but if the city were to default on a loan, they don't want a backhoe. So next, we have encouraged them to, you know, get with us and we'll get with them on this next season. Uh, one thing to, to answer your, your question, Councilman Chita, and we, I've had a lot of talks with our, our, uh, our vendor that you're referring to. And, um, when we, when we go and do a lease, we're piggybacking the price. But he's, he's assuring us that after it's approved, um, he goes to lender and gets a current interest rate. Um, we're not getting locked into a rate that might be six, eight months old. So I did ask him about.
But when we get those, Tom, we're approving a specific dollar amount per year, which includes an interest rate. And that's what we don't know. And to me, we're going into it blind. And I, I don't like that practice.
Okay. Fair enough.
Hey, all right. Thank you, council. Seeing no other questions. I appreciate your work today. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Uh, thank you, Tom, and, and everybody else, Skylar, Teresa, Jeff, for hanging in there with us. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.